We are holding this hearing here in Midrand, today's date being the 4th of December 2024. My name is Nomfondo Maseti. I am the full-time regulator member primarily responsible for piped gas at NERSA. I am sitting here today as the Chairperson of the Electricity Subcommittee. With me today are the members of the Energy Regulator. I would like to introduce the members to you. I would like to start with the Chairperson of the National Energy Regulator, Mr. Tembani Bokula. Mr. Bokula, if you can kindly greet.
Thank you, Chairperson. Good morning, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Bokula. I would like to also introduce the CEO of NERSA on my far right, Advocate Nomalangas Tolle.
Thank you, Chairperson. Good morning, everyone.
Thank you, Advocate Tolle. On my immediate left, I have Ms. Tembeg Asimane, who is a member of the Energy Regulator, as well as a member of the Electricity Subcommittee and the Chairperson of the Finance Committee at NERSA. Ms. Asimane?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Asimane. And on my far left, I have Mr. Musu Wukilem Kise, who is the full-time regulator member primarily responsible for petroleum pipelines and is also a member of the Electricity Subcommittee. Mr. Mkis?
Thanks, Chairperson. Greetings to all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Today's sitting is governed by the National Energy Regulator Act of 2004, which act requires the Energy Regulator to consult with affected parties before we take a final decision. And that is also with regards to APADA. We are here to hear the views of the affected stakeholders, as well as the members of the public insofar as this application is concerned. This hearing was advertised in various newspapers, including Sawetan, The Report, Sunday Times Business Day, and on national radios, including the NERSA social media platforms and the website of NERSA. As indicated, this is the hearing that is held with regards to the governing legislation, which is the NERSA Act. The hearing is governed also by the NERSA rules on public hearings. I would like to summarize those rules so that we can observe these proceedings having those rules in mind. All parties that are going to make presentations, they will do so under oath. The presenters have been given 15 minutes each to do their presentation, and that also includes the questions that may be asked. This is an exception, or well, with an exception of Eskom being the applicant, it will be granted a little more time so that Eskom can be able to deal with all of the aspects of the application and be able to clarify sufficiently for the audience today. And also Eskom to be able to answer questions that may come from the panel, as well as questions that may come from the audience through Mr. Walter Mabunda. Only the members of the panel are allowed to ask questions to the presenters. However, if the members of the public do have questions to ask, they may jot down their questions and send a piece of paper to Walter Mabunda right there at the back. Walter will bring the piece of paper to us as the members of the panel to look into the questions and ask the questions to the presenters, including Eskom. Should presenters wish to present information they consider to be confidential, they should inform the panel. We can then look into that information and decide whether or not we still want to consider that information. Should we do want to consider the information, we will clear the room so that we can hear the confidential part of the information. The hearing today is recorded through the microphones, and the recording will be the official record of the sitting today. The House Rules would like you to switch off your cellphones or please put them on silent mode now so that they don't interrupt the proceedings. For today's sitting, we received 14 requests for presentation. But before we get to the presentations, I would like to invite a person who is going to brief us on evacuation procedures. All right, you may proceed.
Welcome to Gallagher Convention Centre. Please note that our venues are non-smoking zones. Kindly mind the venue's specific safety information. For any matters not addressed in this briefing, you can reach our security on 012663026. The auditorium restrooms are located on either side of the ballroom main entrance. The designated smoking area is outside at the bottom of the ballroom stairs. In the event of an emergency, a siren will sound, and the fire marshal, dressed in a yellow reflector jacket, will announce the emergency. On their instruction, the venue will be evacuated, and the visitors will be led to the assembly point. The venue has four fire escapes, two on the northern side of the venue, leading directly to the assembly point, two at the southern side of the venue, leading to the assembly point next to Richard's Drive. In case of any medical emergency, please make your way to the designated medic room for this event. Thank you for paying attention to this safety briefing. Welcome to Gallagher.
Okay, we're done. Thank you. We now would like to proceed to get a presentation from the... From the continuation. I expected Eskom to be the first one to present here in Gallagher State. Well, in terms, as you know, Eskom is going to work slightly different. Usually, this is the second day because we kicked off these hearings here in Hauding in Saweto yesterday. So this is the continuation. However, there are stakeholders that were not part of yesterday's sitting and were sitting at a different venue. So if you do, if you have a summarized version of the presentation, I would like to give you some few minutes so that you can brief other members of the public that are here today. I think it will be good just to set the stage. We would like to also administer oath. I think it has expired in Saweto overnight. We don't know what happened. May you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you are going to provide to this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do, Chairperson.
Thank you very much. May you please indicate your name and your designation at Eskom for the record?
My name is Caleb Kasim. I'm the group chief financial officer of Eskom.
Thank you, Mr. Kasim. You can give the highlights or the salient aspects of your application.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, panelists, ladies and gentlemen. In terms of Eskom's MYPD6 application over the next three years, before I go into a summary of our application, just to highlight the strategy of Eskom around the four pillars, first and foremost, it was to deal with delivering in terms of financial and operational sustainability. To the operational sustainability, we have been discussing throughout these hearings around the generation recovery plan. And yesterday, our group executive, Becky Nomalo, presented that. As part of the application, we will also highlight the challenges around rear debts, not only municipalities, but also the metros. At the end of the day, through this application, we need to deal with and with the input from the public as well. And the regulator will assess that only efficient costs are recovered through the tariffs. Chair, we'll talk about fraud and corruption. And as part of our closing today, we'll go into more detail on that, Chairperson. From a leadership stability with the appointment of the new CEO and the board's been there now for two years, we see that stability coming through. It's important that we are also on the journey of transforming and unbundling in terms of the separations. We've done the transmission business into the National Transmission Company, South Africa. And yesterday, the interim CEO, Mr. Sekhomo Tso Skaipus, went into a lot of detail around NTCSA in particular, dealt with the third column around the importance of the transmission development plan and growing those networks to ensure that you can connect capacity going forward. Whether it's capacity from Eskom or IPPs into the future, we also need to ensure that we deal with the growth in the distribution business and also addressing the rollout of smart meters to ensure that we can deal with the issue of collecting what is due to us as Eskom. As part of the strategy in terms of the turnaround plan, we are striving for net zero by 2050. And we've taken a lot of learnings from Komati shutting down. So in terms of the repurposing and repowering, we brought those lessons on board. And what does come through in this application as a change in our strategy, whereas the 2035 strategy was focusing on the shutdown of power stations, we acknowledge the importance of ensuring there is supply to the country's needs. So what has happened between MYPD5 and MYPD6, then another 17 units in the generation fleet that are now on the path of continued operations, and those costs then filter through in terms of the MYPD6 application. So Chair, in terms of this application, we've done so in line with the Electricity Regulation Act, the MYPD methodology, and existing electricity pricing policy. Importantly, that we should also note that as part of this, and you will see that, yes, we know there's the amendment to the Electricity Regulation Act, but we still awaiting that announcement of the effective date. In terms of Eskom's financial sustainability, there are four key components to make Eskom financially sustainable, which will then contribute to the operational sustainability. The one element being around the revenue component around the tariffs, that is our application during these public hearings around MYPD. And I'll talk on detail on that in the next few slides. But included in that, the second component is to ensure that Eskom and the costs that we are asking for are efficient costs that are then passed on to the consumer. But there are two other components that are also critical for this financial sustainability, which is firstly, with regard to the balance sheet. Eskom cannot sustain servicing a debt on the balance sheet that is 400 billion. And through the current debt relief mechanism that then ends in March 2026, some 250 billion of support will help us deliver that balance sheet. So at the end of this period, we forecast that our debt on the balance sheet will be less than 250, around 250 billion rand, which is more at a level that we believe we can sustain and service without going back to government to require support. Cumulatively, over the last few years, all the support that we receive through government and national treasury totals just under, less than, close to 500 billion rand, which clearly is dim and national treasury has indicated that they don't have room for further support. There are many other programs that government needs to address versus continuously putting money into Eskom. As part of that, we also need to deal with the last component with regard to municipal and metro debt that has been escalating at unsustainable levels. You know, currently, it's sitting around 90 billion rand. No business can survive if your debt and your REAs are growing in the region of 1 billion to 1 and a half billion per month. That's clearly unsustainable. So the key message here is the MYPD and this tariff application is a key contributing factor to sustainability, but it's not the only factor. All the other components need to work together to get Eskom to a financial viable situation and then getting out of this not being reliant on the fiscus and government for continuous support. Chair, it's important and members to deal with the efficiency of the cost. That's in line with the methodology and the prudency guidelines that the regulator has set for Eskom. And we have throughout these hearings been motivating our costs throughout these hearings. And we'll also take those inputs from the members, as well as the public, as we look to conclude these hearings in Durban in the next few days. With regard to corruption, we've done a lot as Eskom, but it does take a long time to get these investigations concluded and importantly, to then recover the money. We were asked the question, can we quantify this? This is very difficult to quantify, but I'll go into more detail on this when we do close later today. But in principle, as we recover money with regard to fraudulent transactions, we do then include that in subsequent RCA applications, which effectively gives back that money to future tariff decisions in the form of reduction in what is required. In terms of the allowable revenue formula, it's effectively the sum of the value of your regulatory asset base multiplied that by the return on assets that is being requested in this application. And then it's the recovery of the various components in terms of the operating costs. That's allowable revenue divided by the sales volume that is forecasted. You get a cent per kilowatt. You compare it to the current cents per kilowatt in terms of the tariff, and that's how you get the percentage movement year on year. So in summary, this is the application in terms of allowable revenue over the MYPD6 period, where Eskom is asking through this process for 445 billion. In the first year FY26, that then grows to 536 billion at the end of the period. Effectively requesting 36% in the first year, about just about 12% in the second year, and 9% in the last year. Just to highlight that the return on assets that is being requested, it's a phase in return on asset where it grows from 1.58% in the first year to 4%, 5%, and 6%. And then to highlight some of the key components in terms of the cost base, that the primary energy is going up from FY25, from just under 93 billion to 128 billion in FY26, and then kind of leveling out at that level, 133 billion and 129 billion in subsequent years. We do see that the timing of the IPPs and the delays in those coming online does impact on this application, effectively resulting in a decrease from the current year of 77 billion to 67 billion in FY26, and then increasing back to around the 77 billion mark. And then in the last year, as more and more forecasted to come onto the grid, then increases to just under 110 billion. We will also talk on the operating costs in later slides. And then just to talk quickly around REA debts, we have put as part of what we believe is operational requirements and a REA debt amount where we're requesting 2% of revenue, whereas currently that level is running at between 4% and 5% in terms of the revenue and the REA debts. We've also brought in the carbon tax in line with the current policy and the timing of when it comes into effect and the implications to Eskom. Effectively, a quarter, in the last quarter of FY26, resulting in about a 5.5 billion rand impact. And then when you have that for the entire year, it's around a 20 billion number. Just to note that there are no new RCAs. We are implementing what is currently determined by the regulator. I think there are some stakeholders from where we're sitting as Eskom. There's a bit, there is a misunderstanding that the recent RCA decision of 8 billion rand has not been liquidated and determined by the regulator. Some stakeholders assume it's already in this application. It's not. That timing will still be determined by the regulator. In terms of this part that we're discussing at this hearings, that is dealing with the revenue in terms of MYPD6, which I've highlighted, it's important that there is another application in front of the regulator that will similarly have a consultation process around the retail tariff plan, looking to basically restructure the tariffs with an indication of that decision being made in January 2025. Then both outcomes from the revenue determination and the tariff structure determination in terms of the retail tariff plan, those outcomes will be combined to impact on what consumers will see in their bill, starting April next year for Eskom customers through the NERSA determination, and then for municipalities from 1 July next year. Chairperson and members, just to highlight that from a staff complement perspective, if you see the high where Eskom was around 2016, 2017, around 42,000 staff, we have reduced that to around 33,000 staff, which is slightly higher than the level that NERSA using assessing us for MYPD5 at around 31,000 staff. But it does show that we do focus also on addressing our own efficiencies and bringing down our costs. Just to reconcile, you hear in the media that Eskom talks about 40,000 staff. This excludes Eskom Rotek Industries, which is a subsidiary. It's not part of the application. That's about 7,000 staff, which then reconciles back to the 40,000 staff at the overall group. In terms of maintenance, I think an important point here is that over the years, effectively, the regulator has granted substantially all the maintenance that has been requested. And in particular, in the last cycle, we've got all the maintenance that was requested, and we've seen the benefits as Eskom in delivering and executing on that maintenance. You do see an increase in what is requested here. I think just to highlight that this move to continued operations and addressing those requirements and those needs in terms of those extra 17 units do come through in this application, also dealing with the requirements under NTCSA, as well as the distribution environments. Chairperson and members, with regard to other operating costs, these pie charts add up to around 27 billion rand in total. And just to highlight some of the key items that make us other operating costs, which effectively excludes the maintenance cost and the staff cost. We look at our security costs of about 1.44 billion. Insurance for an asset base of around 700 billion is significant. That's around 6.5 billion on average. And then to maintain the property and the services of all our equipment, that is also a significant cost item of around 500 billion. Then you also deal with issues such as software license fees, et cetera, and other components in terms of our operating costs. So what does it mean in terms of the breakdown of, in particular, I'll focus on the 36%, what are the drivers that is causing that? I think firstly, there's an element of what we call negotiated pricing agreements. And effectively, between the MYPD5 decision and where we're sitting now, there have been in the region of about 12 of these agreements being granted. And effectively, at these rates for the special pricing agreements, it's not at the average tariff. It means that the balance needs to be recovered from the rest of the customer base. That contributes 5.7% to the tariff being requested. And then I touched on the primary energy acquiring about 11.2% impact in the first year. Operating costs 10.3%. Spoke about the REA debts. And then you see the increase of the return on assets from the 1.58 to the 4% coming through of 7.9. The drop in IPPs and then the carbon tax introduction. And then, as we say, we just apply in the current to give you the 36%. When you go to the second year and the third year, you will see that at what I call is the Eskom contributing factors overall will give you 5.9. And then in the second year, the other driving components is 2.7% from IPPs and the remainder of the carbon tax coming through after the RCA to give you just under the 12% in year two. And similarly, when you go to the third year, the overall Eskom components contributing 5.8%. And then you do see subsidy in terms of that category. We also, through the retail tariff plan proposal on the inclining block rates, our one proposal is remove the block rates and just have one block at the lowest level so you avoid increasing rates as you consume more and more electricity. What has also been important is that around free basic electricity, what we have found is from studies done by Stats SA and Reserve Bank, is that utilization is only around 20%, which means 80% of that is not being utilized for the benefit of consumers. So effectively, it comes to the importance of executing on the administration to make sure that those administration elements are complete so consumers can get the benefit of that. There's also been through these hearings proposals to increase the 50 kilowatts per hour to, whether it's 100 or 150. But that's not going to help if we're not going to get the utilization up to the level that is required to allow for relief to those consumer categories. So Chair, in conclusion, as a summary, Eskom's application has been made in terms of the methodology. We do understand that this is a significant request, taking into account the economic conditions. And in doing that, we've also, from an Eskom perspective, phased in the returns at the levels and trying to balance our requirements to ensure that we're also sustainable and move away from being a burden on the fiscus continuously. Ultimately, these are costs that need to be incurred to operate, to sustain the infrastructure and to grow into the future. And if it's not paid through the electricity tariff and Eskom has to continue to deliver these services, we have no other option but to go back via the shareholder and the fiscus to ask for further support. We want to ensure that we move away from that and that we can sustain ourselves on our own strength, obviously being cognizant of driving efficiencies in our business, but also delivering on supply of electricity to the consumers as required. Chair, that is the overall summary from an Eskom perspective. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kasim.
We will not ask questions. I think we've already indicated what issues we would like you to respond to. Thank you very much, and you will deal with those in the concluding remarks at the end of today's hearing. Thank you. We would like to call on the first presenter, which is Swaranang Community Project, O Project. We've got Lindy Zwana. They are going to adjust the mic for you. All right. May you please raise your right hand, ma'am? Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you're going to provide to the panel is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and your designation at the Swaranang Community O Project.
Okay. Ika Malami, Ulinji Wakanzwaana from Swaranang Community Project. And footing we are go forum EBCF, Gooi Women Energy and Climate Change Forum. Egoi forum, yabo mama, ababu yagundao esu gene, ngapanga se kautene, especially guma communities. I Swaranang, Gooi Party, yayo leo forum. And I Swaranang yona, ibuya le eva toni. Eh, tinanjenge Swaranang Community Project and the WCCF, siti se ayre cheta, i MYPD six, i increase le efunayo, he Eskom. Ngoba, tina, singabo mama, se ama communities, angase benzine, anye genje sikone, ukuafoda, le increase efunayo, he Eskom. Ogwa manje, nje, asikone, uki sikhenge, na le electricity. So maguzo tu ge increase wa, and then siyo chata pi male, kule community mina enguya gue eva toni, most abantu balapaya, si pila ne grant. Senza kuma ngayo ge le, three seven, nisho ge le, yaban tuana, se gube aboko. So most abantu ababu yagule ya community, nje, abase benzine. So, ko na ngoku, nje, kogwa manje, asikone, uki singa, bani three meals a day. Ngoba, le male si thola, yonaya kamkam, ai le ngani? So, isipha eh, uki isbega, eh, ndaweni, uki manje, ana si chusa electricity. Onoma si chuse ukuja, of which we can, anye asikone, nje, uki pira singa. And then, yu go si tina, he Eskom, ma enga niye zwa, le, i increase efunayo. Ngoba si understand, uki, eh, electricity ma nyoga, noguja gi nyuka, eh, transport eh, nyuka, yonki entenje eh, nyuka. And then, mas kuma ne electricity, uza, ogwa manje, nje, mo itenga. Uteenga eh, 50 rand, utenga 120 rand. The way it shoma, the way i ku ngakone, isn't it, the way zip duran ngakone? Even ngasendlini, no uki tumdona aban benje, i geldele, atu bambe, i remote, atu ya i lighter. Uya mtetisa, and basically, si kula kui environment, anne enga. And la abantu asikula, asba kulisa yo, bane enga, ngasendlini, babu yaba pumele ngapandi. Bade ne enga, and si enda, asibene, society, nama communities, anne enga. Ngoba, asa afford, mantenga 20 rand, motu bambe, remote, aditivindam tetis. So, anje, he Eskom, ma imega ngani? And then, si kuma footing FBE, obabu asa Eskom, kui slide sake. Ukulu me, uki, eh, most ama communities, abakulu kui accessa, le FBE. Ngoba information, ai fig, ga, le guma communities. Even na la ba thola, le information, ye free basic electricity. Mapa fika la pagama spal, bayi swale, bayi swale, bayi swale. So basically, nje, eh, community, ai benefit. Na labo, abane information, kobe inama conditions. Mele, eh, accessible, eh, gay one. Galo klasa, eh, nemo no tange electricity, and then automatically, is on game. So, ngay one, awakatoli grant, ama grant ama nje, awasa, awasa kongay one, ah, after eh, one. Da, uchutu nje, ah, si nyago sa, accessa, lo fi, basic electricity. So, tina, city, left. Afana nama renewable energy. Anye, gube ne rooftop solar rollout, guma communities, la amajinalize, angakoni, ukuafoda. And iti eh, free basic electricity is a program, anye, eh, subsidizer. The very same methodology, my se benzine swae, uki abantu babe nama solar. Eh, zinto nizabo, eh, solar is free ilanga, aldi ngayekino uki uto Eskom yalo ona. Na le entoyake, uto zoteksana nama solar, ashi funi, and sivoi Luisa na yo. Because eh, aguna muntu, o ona ilanga. So, si tella nje, da, uki afuna le increase, magaiyenza, uki le program, isabenzele, abantu aban ngakoni, abantu aban ngase benzine yo. Mantete lela, eh, country ne tu ogwa manje, si kuma ne just transition. Si kuma ne just transition, kune ente, eh, si kuma yaguti, jenge country, kumele si, si ye, gama si change, eh, ndele, senza ngazo, eh, zinto. And si explore, ama, ama alternatives, afana nama renewable energy. Ana eh, Eskom yona, eh, yanzani ngaloko. So, uku ne slide la, pos kuma nama IPPs. Amma IPPs la kuma ngao lapaya, inama yakona ingani, ma ba tuwa kupula. Because ogwa manje, eh, se country, njengoba basho, omte tholo, wakona uki, kumele si, ndule si hambe, si 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 change. So, if like, uki ya increase, aslo si stiganeno Eskom. And then, le just transition, efunegay, eh, kumele si movele gue. Ana si zoe konaga nje. Ana si zoe konaga nje. So, Eskom, le increase efunayo, tina city, singabo mama, be WCCF, ababu mama, ba Swaranang Community Project, anje, ona tholi, next gue. Nishone sent, ngoba, asa afford, asa se benzine, ngia bo ngache.
Mama, mama, siyabongaka kulu. I think um, yalezo wako, ubempleka kulu, utatilema. Siyabulela kulu, siyatemba, nukutu Eskom, they were listening, and makuzwile, uki uti. Ne, spakamiso sakos, uki, eh, abantu ba, eh, ba peke, eh, isola, eh, si technology, abantu bangafika lela gue. Siyabanga kulu, ngasikati sakoma.
Niabo.
All right, we now move on to the next presenter, Amadia Projects and Cooperative. All right, may you please raise your right hand, Puti. Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you're going to give to the panel is the truth and the whole truth?
Ngekama la, kunkunu ngulu, the whole truth.
Yabonga kakulu. Galo putasnike se, ika malake, kunye ne, skunda, aspete yola, pa kule, Amadia Projects and Cooperative.
Okay, Minahimu Clement Meprudi. I'm from Climate Action Group, which is grassroots for climate action. Amadia Project and Cooperative is part of our forum where we meet as communities. I'm asking apology for Sis Pauline because she's got a very, very serious problem in the community. Now she asked as we constituency, just to present. It's only, I think, there's only 12 points that she said I must only present for her. Thanks.
Thank you, Puti. And ya temu, uki ya kuntu represent usis Pauline ka le, kumi yales.
Iebo mama.
All right, unakala ke.
Okay. Firstly, upali no to 40% MYPD six. The South African nation have spoken in all provinces about the unlawful of the NERSA and Eskom and also other metros which sell the electricity. And the methodology, MYPD five and six, are all vulnerable and unjust to all the public. Secondly, the judiciary and regulatory bodies are still waiting for facts. Why Eskom want 40% to be applied to South Africa? Before the national detriment contribution, which are due in 2025. Thirdly, the grassroots public request NERSA to consider the cost of supply method before the benchmarking method. Fourthly, public request the free basic energy to be compulsory for a just transition to all where no one is left behind. Five, poor communities cannot now afford renewable energy, solar and wind without support from NERSA. Six, the electricity pricing policy. Government Gazette 31741 of 19 December 2006 mandated municipalities to base tariff on the cost of supply. Seven, the cost of supply study says essential function. Firstly, it ensure that municipality effectively distribute electricity to all. Secondly, the function also ensure that a just standardized and transparent process that public and business can engage with for resilience. All sphere arms of government are clear and aware regarding what methodology NERSA must use. Executive has set the policies that requires a cost of supply. Parliament, through Energy Regulation Act of 2006, Section 27 slash H, determine that NERSA, MYPD five and six methodology must comply with all policies. Judiciary court, in the form of a final judgment, has declared that NERSA must resist from benchmarking and assumption and use cost of supply approach. Lastly, the Climate Change Act is a just solution for all. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Puti. I think we, from our side, we took note of your presentation and the references to those pieces of legislation and also the need for transition. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma.
Thank you, Puti. All right, we now move on to the next presenter. We have Afri Forum. Afri Forum, Walter, can you please attend to that? If the presenter is not ready, we will then move on. You can address, you can address the person who organizes the hearing on the logistics. Walter, shall we proceed to the next presenter? We now move on to the next presenter, Association of South African Chambers, Asak.
Good morning. Morning, Chair.
Good morning. Just waiting for your colleague to... Okay, may you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you're going to provide to this panel is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. May you please state your name and your designation at Asak?
My name is Melanie Vaness. I'm the chairperson of the Association of South African Chambers.
Thank you very much. Are you with your colleague? Are you going to share the presentation?
Um, yes, I have shared it with Walter. And Dave is not going to present. He's going to be here for answering any questions in case there are questions.
Okay. Can I also just administer oath? Do you solemnly declare that the evidence you're going to provide to the panel is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and your designation at Asak for the record.
Okay, I'm David Mertens, and I'm on the board of one of the member chambers, Nelson Mandela Bay Business Chamber.
Thank you very much. You may start with your presentation, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Just a brief introduction to the Association of South African Chambers. I want to state unequivocally that ASAC rejects the application by Eskom. They make comments on the application that it makes power unaffordable for most users. It enables continued municipal dysfunction, and it fails to address the system inefficiencies and challenges. Eskom's costs, we're doing less with more. And then a conclusion and some recommendations. The Association of South African Chambers is a voluntary political association established in 2019 by the country's largest chambers to promote collaboration between member chambers. In order to broaden and strengthen their capabilities, the most important thing is to contribute to a collective lobby on key business issues, obviously, which this is one of. We represent a significant portion of the organized business community in South Africa, 12 business associations from six provinces. We collectively represent more than 7,000 members from SMEs to large corporates across all sectors. And more than 850,000 people are employed by our members. We represent membership that issues between 80% and 90% of non-preferential certificates of origin in South Africa, so a significant portion of trade. Those are our members, the major chambers within the borders of South Africa. The application comes as a complete shock, we've heard from previous presenters. Most electricity users have endured massive electricity price escalations over the last 20 years. And the taxpayers paid substantial bailouts to Eskom over the last 20 years. So if we just look at Eskom's increases versus CPI, from 2005 to 2025, Eskom's increases 1,041%, CPI 157%. That's 6.6 times. We're asking between 25 and 28. Eskom is asking for an increase of 66.1%, CPI 15.8%. That's 4.2 times CPI. There's a little comparison there of, we paid 100 rand in 2005. We paid 1,147 rand today and 1,896, 27, 28. This application is requesting approximately 310 billion through tariffs above CPI. On top, the taxpayer funds Eskom 254 billion from the 2023 Eskom Debt Relief Fund. It makes electricity completely unaffordable for most. Eskom says that electricity pricing in South Africa is globally competitive. We disagree, as the provided international 23 tariff comparison is misleading. Eskom ignores above inflation increases since 2023 in the effect of the application. Most medium-sized industries located within municipalities where tariffs are much higher by 15 to 20%. Eskom proposes special tariffs for smelters because mega flex tariffs are uncompetitive. Why would they do that? By next year, Eskom's direct tariffs to industry will no longer provide global competitive advantage. By next year, municipal tariffs to industry will align with the most expensive in the world. Per the Eskom application page 137, a price elasticity for industry of 0.254% will reduce industrial electricity usage by at least 15% by 2026. This application fundamentally compromises South Africa's reindustrialization. And where will we find the needed jobs for the people that are unemployed in South Africa? Electricity supply industry keeps doing less and less with more and more. Electricity supply industry keeps doing less and less with more and more, which is a dead end street for South Africa's economy. These are the role players that need to put a plan in place, um, to arrest this unsustainable situation. Eskom, NERSA, the municipalities in Selga, Treasury and the IPPs. One of the most critical points is that municipal failure compromises Eskom and the consumers. Many municipalities are unsustainable and dysfunctional. Many municipalities are failing the users through poor quality of supply and unlawful tariffs. Debt to Eskom has escalated to a point where Eskom is compromised. Treasury's municipal debt relief plan forces Eskom to carry the cost of municipal defaulters. In addition, Treasury's debt relief plan is failing, exposing Eskom even further. Treasury rewards municipal failure. Eskom plans for municipal debt to exceed a hundred and eighty seven billion by the end of NYPD six. Municipal default is funded through Eskom and passed on to the electricity consumer. And we have already paid our electricity tariffs to municipalities. We see no plan to deal with the root cause of government failure. If you have a look at the overdue debt from municipalities, um, it's absolutely astounding. Electricity challenges at a municipal level. One of the biggest challenges, particularly for manufacturers embedded in municipal infrastructure, um, which is who we represent, is infrastructure failure at municipal level. This is due to a number of factors, including but not limited to a lack of maintenance. We have networks collapsing, protection bypass, frequent and extended unplanned outages, and serious quality of supply issues. It's completely out of control and unsustainable. I have a member that invested in sixty million rand worth of new equipment from Germany. Um, when a technician came out to install it, he left after a week because he said he's never worked anywhere where the quality of supply was so poor and he cannot work in this conditions. So he left, then stranded. The theft of electricity, illegal connections and meter tampering goes unabated. As gross trading losses escalate and there is less and less available funding for electricity business, and there's less and less funding available to pay Eskom. And how sustainable is that? Cable theft and vandalism. But there's little or no willingness to address the inefficiencies at local municipal level because they recover these costs via the tariffs and because they're allowed to default on their Eskom payments. In most instances, municipal customers pay a premium for a vastly inferior service. Excessive increases to Eskom simply enable this dysfunction and make us pay for it. This is a graph of our bulk electricity purchases in my municipality, um, Zuzi Local Municipality. Uh, the build revenue is the blue line and you can see two things here. One, we make ever escalating gross trading losses, which is completely unsustainable. Two, um, we municipalities purchase on a, um, a time of use tariff from Eskom. Um, and they actually charge consumers only manufacturers on a time of use. So what should happen is that the line, the blue line should actually be a much flatter line flattened by, um, people that are, are not paying on a time of use tariff. But it's just about mirroring that. So it tells you who's actually paying for electricity and who's not paying. Many municipalities are no, no longer capable of distributing electricity. Too many of them are failing to meet their obligations to Eskom and many more will eventually fail to meet their obligations to Eskom. Most municipalities do not comply with their various licensing conditions, their financial, technical and general conditions. And there is no plan to deal with the self destruction of municipalities' electricity distribution. There's no plan to deal with this, there's no plan to deal with the self destruction at all. The National Energy Regulator does absolutely nothing. Why are there no licensed revocations for local municipalities when they are failing so horribly? Treasury does nothing. It is challenging to retain or attract investment in an environment which is not enabling. Municipalities must be dealt with before financial default to Eskom. Municipal debt escalation per the application is simply unacceptable and Eskom can no longer be burdened by municipal failure. Government must fix or revoke failing electricity distribution licensees. We need urgent positive government intervention in our municipalities. We recommend an urgent intervention to rescue the electricity distribution, including Eskom, NERSA, Treasury and users. We need a plan. What we're doing is unsustainable. Eskom's requested allowable revenue is unacceptable. Eskom admits costs of past and future inefficiencies are passed on to the consumer. The failure of Kusile and Madupi is catastrophic. Nine thousand six hundred megawatt project was delivered five to 10 years late. The capital cost for the project is overspent by close to two hundred billion. The project being late caused all load shedding and associated costs such as OCGT and loss of sales. Current debt position is caused by the failure of Kusile and Madupi. Legacy costs of the IPP rounds one to three, forty five billion for NYPD six. Eskom's operational assumptions remain well below acceptable performance. OCGT usage of six percent is unacceptable between twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. It was below one percent. The EF in NYPD, uh, six is only at sixty four percent. Twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, it was a seventy eight percent. The requested revenue is unacceptable. Eskom maintains far too much costly generation capacity over NYPD six. Eskom's application excludes rightsizing. Generation output has shrunk by thirty five percent, but costs keep going up despite the shrinking output. The cost of personnel, if you reference the table next to you, it's, it's outrageous. There's no way business would ever, ever not rise as an organization, um, when it was, when the output was shrinking. The cost of maintenance has escalated. Other OPECs, capital investment, RAB, how can all the costs keep going up at the rate they're going up, um, and yet generation is shrinking? Eskom's coal cost escalates out of control. Coal costs, um, burn costs ran per ton increased by ninety percent from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight. CPI is thirty percent for the same period. Coal usage reduced by twenty five percent over the period. Something doesn't make sense. Eskom charges unacceptable costs to standard users. The NPA subsidy compromises standard users, including municipalities. The twelve cementers that awarded preferential tariffs amount to a hundred and eight billion for NYPD six period. Nurses NPA approval sense disclosure, read the rationale for the awarding of these SPAs. Standard users, including labor intensive industry, pay ten percent more to subsidize smelters. Why are we passing this cost on to the balance, um, of, of other users? Smelters have a low employment per kilowatt hour. International sales compromise standards, including users, including municipalities. International customers are awarded preferential tariffs amounting to twenty two billion for NYPD six. That's totally unacceptable. Distribution losses are bloated at nine point five percent and exceed Eskom's own standards. Eskom hides losses from low voltage distribution customers and charges these to the high voltage connections. Double taxation, NYPD six includes sixty five billion carbon tax plus environmental tax, um, from Treasury. Through this application, the municipal users just pay for everything. Direct burden of municipal incompetence and mismanagement, pay for the indirect burden of the executive missing in action regarding the finances of failing municipalities, the past failures of Eskom, the lack of downsizing of Eskom in the application, out of control escalation, um, of Eskom costs, subsidization to smelters and international customers. It is grossly unjust and unsustainable for South Africa. So what is the proposed way forward? The catastrophic local municipalities must be fixed. Municipalities failing to meet their licensing requirements must have their licenses qualified or revoked. The cost of municipal inefficiency and default cannot be a burden to Eskom and paying customers. Nurses to review the application to reflect efficient costs and efficient operations of Eskom per ERA section fifteen. Nurses to review applied cost escalations and lack of downsizing by Eskom. Subsidy to smelters must be reviewed or accommodated elsewhere. The cast cost cannot be carried by other users as it jeopardizes labor intensive medium sized industry. This is a crisis. It's an emergency situation. Our economy is anchored by manufacturing. The application completely ignores the position of labor intensive manufacturing, specifically that embedded in municipal infrastructure. Manufacturing needs reliable and competitive power to operate and create jobs. We need to prioritize South Africa. We need a solution for the whole electricity business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Um, I would like to, I would like you to, um, have a piece of paper just to check if the members would have questions, eh, of clarity. I would like to start with advocate Zitoli. Okay, thank you, Mr. Pogul.
Uh, thank you. Can you just give us an indication of how many of your customers, uh, I mean, in your associations, I didn't say the list, uh, do you have energy intensive users in, uh, part of the chambers and how many of them have NPAs? Thank you.
Um, there will be some. Um, please take down the questions. I requested you to take down the questions so that I can ask further questions. Um, Miss Sima. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mkes.
Uh, uh, sorry. Thanks, um, for the presentation. I know that you may not respond to this question here and now, but I think it will also help us just to get an indication of the migration of people from, eh, of your, your members, I mean, from just relying on the grid, eh, and, and, and Scom's, um, um, utilization of their electricity, um, yeah, the energy produced from Scom. So if you can kindly do that, that's the first question. The second one relates to, um, whether or not you reject the entire increases that are proposed by Scom. We do want to get clarity on that, um, especially because you represent business and also the fact that, um, Scom does have costs that they will obviously incur for Scom to be able to generate electricity and also other costs such as ancillary services, which are cost, uh, that, um, are intended to, um, facilitate the integration of renewable energy. So there is, there are some investments as indicated by Scom that needs to be made to accommodate renewables. So that is the, the second question that I would like to find out, whether you reject the entire, um, increases. The third and the last question from me relates to your rejection of the usage of OCGTs. You are saying that the projected six percent usage, you disagree with it. May you indicate what usage you believe should be the efficient usage of the OCGT, given the fact that Scom has already indicated to us, eh, that even in line with the methodology and the dispatching rules, the OCGTs will be dispatched only for purposes that they are meant for or they are designed for, for peak purposes, right? So if they are for peak purposes, then they will be sitting at six percent load factor. Are you now saying that that should not be the case? Thank you.
Um, thank you for those questions. Um, in the first instance, there are some chambers, um, that have a couple of members that benefit from, um, from those subsidies. Um, we said very specifically that they should be accommodated elsewhere, that they can't ask other users to pay for those subsidies. If they're justifiable, um, and then they must be accommodated some other way. The question regarding how many of our members, uh, are utilizing, uh, solar panels and alternative forms of energy, um, there is significant investment in that space. Um, I've seen particularly in my own environment, a large number of people, um, putting, uh, alternative, uh, energy in place. Um, I think it's difficult to say to what extent, but it's definitely escalating, um, and escalating at quite a rate, uh, not only because of affordability, because of the, um, insecurity and poor quality of supply. So those factors jointly drive that. Um, so it's, it's significant and it will continue to increase as a trend, which undermines Eskom's own business significantly. Um, I think that is probably going to be higher. I wouldn't like to guess at what that percentage will be, but I, I would imagine it would be higher than that. So that's quite conservative. Um, we, we reject the elements of the. To recover their efficient costs of supply, um, but anything that is not efficiently incurred, um, is rejected by our members. We don't tolerate inefficiencies in our own business and we don't see why we should have to accommodate them in any other business. Um, David, uh, perhaps you can.
Chair, thanks for all the questions. Um, so on the OCGTs, um, if you look at previous NYPD applications, the OCGT usage was set at one percent. So that was really what the planned usage.
Apologist, there seem to be some technical challenge sorting it out.
All right, just to save time, if all of those that have presentations, if they can kindly, um, ask Walter to upload them. Walter Mabunda, the one who's assisting Mr. Mosted, they, if you can kindly make sure that your presentations are given to Walter for Walter to upload them. Right.